We will call this meeting to order of the January 21st. Corder Madara Town Council, can we start with a roll call, please?
Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Avasio.
Here, and could you all join me, please, for a salute to our flag?
Let's just be just to the flag of the United States of America. To the public, for which things. In physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and we will start tonight with open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the town council concerning any item that is not on the agenda for tonight. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. And do we have anybody from the audience here who would like to speak? Janet Moore. Over at the podium. You hear me?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to introduce myself, I'm Janet Moore, and I am president of the Corder Madira Lions Club. And I'm here tonight just to make a couple of comments about our community center. As many of you may know, maybe you don't know, we, the Lions Club, was responsible for building the community center back in 1951. So we have a real attachment to that building and, you know, we really feel it's the heart and soul of the community. There's just wonderful events that take place there, not to mention, you know, the Lions events that we hold there, our monthly meetings, et cetera. And what I'd like to say is that I would love to see some improvements made to the community center. We now have this gorgeous town hall, and I think the community center is looking a little tired, shall I say? It's functional, but a little tired. I would love the council to consider some deferred maintenance for the the community center. I think if we do a few things, we would certainly enhance revenues. I think there would be an opportunity for more rentals and certainly the patio. I think that is just a jewel. And again, looking like it needs a little bit of an uplift with plants and maybe enhancing views of the hills, which is gorgeous. Maybe some new sliding doors or the nano doors to have better access to the yard. Also, you know, I think the green room is there, but it's kind of not really functional. It'd be great if we could repurpose that for storage. I know we could use more storage, and I'm sure other groups too could could use that back room, so wanted to mention that as a possibility. Let's see, what else? Yeah, basically just improving the aesthetics of the center. So I was kind of hoping that the council would consider a separate maintenance or capital improvement plan so that, you know, we could really count on deferred maintenance year after year and just not let that kind of go by the wayside. So those are my comments, and I think just a couple improvements and it would just look so much more, so much nicer as a community meeting place. So thank you for listening. Thank you very much, Janet. Okay, is there anybody else in the room who would like to speak now? And what about online? Do we have anybody waiting online?
We don't have any hands raised from attendees online. We did receive a public comment via email that was uploaded to the website and shared with the council earlier today. Aside from that, we don't have any additional public comment.
Is there another public comment that just happened to walk in? You sure can, you sure can, the microphone is right over there. Okay, oh, you need a moment to prepare. Oh, wow. A quickie, a quickie. Can you, can you go to the microphone, please? Say thank you. Nothing like being put on the spot when you first walk in the door, huh? But you're a performer, you're used to.
Yeah. No excuses, though, I just want to say 100% I'm behind Janet and Pat. Their vision of improving the rec center really needs to be addressed. And I especially like Pat's idea of opening up the vista. So we have this natural resource in our, in our hands, and it would just be, I think, an omission and the error not to use it and improve it. Plus, I'm sure Janet, I apologize for being a few minutes, mentioned that the Lions Club built the rec center, and we just got the wonderful dishwasher, hallelujah. So many wrinkly hands in the Lions Club. And I mean, the improvements, I fought for that, well, you can laugh, but if you had to do the dishes, it was so fun. But the Lions Club has just added so much to this town and need to be recognized, and our beautiful rec center really needs to be maintained better and improved. I mean, welcome to the 20th century, is what my grandpa used to say, but we really need to move these things along. We can have more community services and events. And thank you for just a half a minute, sorry.
Thank you very much. Okay, nobody online still, or still in the clear?
Correct, no, no one online, no email, public comment.
Okay, so I shall close open time for public comment and move on. We don't have any presentations tonight. And the next item is the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and don't require further conversation. They will be approved by a single motion, but any council member or member of the public may ask for something to be removed from the consent calendar if they believe it needs to be discussed. So from the council, I believe we have one, you said?
A pull 4B for clarification.
4B? And anything else, James? Anything?
No, but for future ones, can you take the minutes as a separate item? Because I'm going to start voting against it unless I get more detail.
Is that possible to pull the minutes? Or should we, should we, should we go ahead and pull it tonight? Pull the minutes? Let's go ahead and pull it for tonight, so we can discuss what your concerns are. That's probably a valuable thing to do. Okay, so should we first entertain a motion to consider and pass 4A, 4C, and 4? I guess that's just 4A and 4C, since both D and E are regards to minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
And can I have a roll call?
Okay, and just for the record, there are no hands raised, doesn't look like there's any public comment for the consent calendar.
Okay.
Okay, so councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Avasio.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Okay, so let's first talk about 4B. Fred.
Yeah, just concerned. I know Doria's here.
Okay.
On the expenses, it says expenses have increased by $1 million, and it looks like they're all related to salary.
About half of that $1 million, $553,000 is the required payment for CalPERS unfunded liability, which we did not have to make last year, so over $500,000 was for that. And then salaries have actually increased by $247,000 compared to last year at that time. And that has to do with the salary. The salary schedule increases 4% for most employees and 6% for SEIU. And it also takes into account the fact that last year the building official position was vacant until April, and there was a senior engineer position that was vacant until January, and also the town manager served as both the town manager and the community development director for a few months. So those salaries were not paid at this time last year, so all of those items together equal about $247,000. And then outside services has increased by nearly $300,000, $296,000. Police has increased by 4.2%. And fire, as adopted, has increased by 8.5%, although there's a budget revision later in this agenda. So between the more than $500,000 for the CalPERS and then the $247,000 for the salaries, and then the $296,000 for outside services, that's most of the increase, and then there are some smaller items listed in here as well.
Okay, and the outside service primarily police and fire, right? Because I know we did the MO.
Yes, probably, probably something like 90% of outside services is police and fire contracts.
Okay, and just two other quick questions. When I look at the budget comparison report, when I go to bottom line general fund, it says adopted budget, we're looking at $759,000. I know we're only six months into the fiscal year, but year to date it's only $18,000?
Yeah, some of that has to do with the fact that over, let's see, I don't know the exact amount, probably 1.3 million or so of the money that we're expecting is from the sanitary district to pay for salaries that, because the sanitary district doesn't have employees of its own to pay for salaries that are doing sanitary district work. And so I don't do that, you know, that's not done until the end of the year when we have the actual amount. That's a large part of it. And then business licenses come intermittently. We have just now, they're behind, you know, several months. And sales tax also, this report is only, is only, I think, maybe four payments out of the 12 that we're expecting. So revenue, you know, lags, it doesn't come in as, in such a nice neat pattern as expenses. You know, you have to pay the salaries every month and pay PG&E and that, that kind of thing. So we pay the expenses every month for the most part, except for things like CalPERS that has to be paid upfront. But, and then the revenue comes in, you know, on a different schedule.
Okay, all right, thanks, they did, those numbers just stuck out at me, especially the million on the salaries and then the large variances on the revenue part of it. So thanks.
So question, do we vote on that one or go ahead and discuss the others first?
I'll go ahead and make the motion approve 4B.
Second.
Councilmember.
Did we get public comment? Do we need to ask for public comment on this issue? Thank you, Eli. Oh, so we don't need to ask for public comment on this specific item? Okay.
We don't have any hands raised regardless. Okay, so there was a motion and a second. Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Avasio.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Okay, let's move on to this question of the minutes. Jim, you've mentioned this to me before, and I would love for you just to kind of explain your concern.
Well, let's see, I, when I rolled off a council, we were getting minutes where you could actually understand the gist of the argument for and against through the course of the, course of the meeting. And in terms of finding things six months down the road, it was easy to quickly scan through the old minutes and say, okay, yeah, I know where that is, okay? But the new ones are so abbreviated. I don't know what the substance of the arguments were, except for sort of the minutes. And I've heard people say, well, you can go back and watch the council online. Well, I didn't attend the BPAC meeting a little while ago, but I wasted two and a half hours of my life today watching it. If I could have just scanned through the minutes of that, it probably would have saved me a couple of hours. So I think anybody out there who relies on the minutes of town council should get enough detail that they can just, you know, call, open it in PDF, and then if necessary, do a Word search and find out what was, what was discussed.
Okay, so I remember when we made this switch, and some of it was after COVID, when we did start recording all of the meetings to have that as a record, which is of course more accurate than any minutes could be, because I always felt sorry for those taking minutes because there were so many conversations and sometimes convoluted, and then they would all come back. So it's, it is a difficult job, but Adam, I'm wondering, can we use AI for that?
So there are new tools that certainly we've explored in the, it changes sort of every month now on AI and how the quality of it. So when it first came out, that was something we did actually explore, and there were people trying to pitch us on, you know, use our service to, we'll generate the minutes for you using AI. It still requires, I think the issue is, it still requires anything you receive through some sort of program filtering through a recorded video or listening to the audio, still is going to require staff to go through and make sure that it's correct. It's frankly, one of the things we're going to be talking about on, on our work plan is an AI policy for staff. But, so I don't think it, I don't think you can rely on that and say that that's going to save the staff time involved with creating the minutes. Certainly something we could explore further and see if it's advanced to the point where it's a little bit more of a level of accuracy that we're comfortable with and see how long it takes, but yeah, I think that's where we are right now, so.
Would it be all right for me to ask the council whether or not they are also concerned enough? Do we want to put this on an agenda? Are you three also concerned about the lack of detail in the minutes? Or is this a, just Jim's concern?
For me, I think they've gone too far one way. There has, there should be a balance, I think maybe before they were too long, but I think now they're way too short. And to me, it just lacks transparency, because what we're telling residents is, if you want to find out about something, you have to go watch the video. And in the video, you have to go through X amount to find the spot where you want to. I don't know what the happy medium is. I don't know in the minutes, if we can mark in the minutes the link to the video, so these people would, they wouldn't have to spend hours. They could just go directly to that line item.
Or at least the time mark when it starts.
Correct.
Yeah, each item, so theoretically, where you have each agenda item, put a timestamp on where in the the video exactly that particular item starts, potentially.
But I think some, but even that, I think there needs to be, again, I don't want to have pages of minutes. There needs to be a little bit more meat that went in there now, because right now, there isn't, there's nothing. And one thing I would suggest is maybe what we do, and you kind of hit upon it, Adam, is maybe we can get it in the work plan, just call transparency or whatever, has a work plan item to improve, sorry, to improve the minutes. Only a suggestion.
I think Rebecca has something to say.
Thank you, Mayor Avasio. Just some background on how we arrived at action minutes was back in probably July of 2020 or June of 2020, when we were looking at potential budget cuts in relation to COVID and the pandemic and budget shortfalls that were projected. Us and other cities, I don't know how many cities in Marin, but several cities moved to action minutes from summary minutes. It saved some time, it saved some money. Our minutes clerk was also retiring around that time, and we couldn't find anyone to take on that work. And it usually took her between five and six hours on average to produce the minutes and charged between $300 and $600 per meeting for the minutes. And that was just for, for council. And if you, she handled several other of our advisory bodies as well. We actually also have a similar problem with just finding someone to take on minutes clerk for other things, like our staff, Lorena, the clerk, does these summary minutes, but other advisory bodies hire someone to do that, and that person is also retiring. So it is a difficult niche to fill, and I'm wondering if we don't have this, this on the video right now, but in the YouTube, they do AI-generated summary of closed captioning. You can turn on the closed captions, and you can also read the summary notes, but you have to toggle to it, and I'm wondering if it would be helpful to give council a tutorial on how to access the transcription. It's AI-generated, it's not perfect, but it is a transcription where you can read through it, you could copy and paste it into a Word document and scan it. I think there are also services that do AI transcriptions of videos that we could look into. But they wouldn't, I don't know that they would be accepted as minutes.
Amy Ackerman, town attorney. We're getting a little bit deep on this discussion where it's, we're simply asking to approve minutes. I was just going to say, it sounds like there's a solution here somewhere. Let's.
I just, from a legal perspective, minutes serve as the historical record of the body, and it is a record of the actions taken. And because they serve that purpose, most legislative bodies have, have moved to action minutes. That, and in particular, because everything is now recorded. Prior to that, we had audio recordings, now it's a video recording. When you get more detail in the minutes, you have speakers who contest the accuracy of the minutes. That's not what I said, that's not how I said it, and you can end up having a lot of public comment on your minutes, which can affect the efficiency of council. But I think, I think these are, you know, it's a great discussion, but I think we should properly agendize it at a future meeting.
Sounds good, okay with you, Adam? All good?
Yes, and we obviously have our work plan discussion coming up.
So with that, can you move the meetings, tentatively be? Okay. So Jim, Jim's made a motion to approve both sets of minutes for D and 4E?
Yeah.
I'll second.
The second, okay.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Avasio.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Okay, coming up next, we do not have any public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to 6A, which is consideration and possible adoption of resolution number 012025, our first resolution of the year approving a revised parks and recreation fee schedule for the fiscal year. And I believe we have Mr. Berry here to give us a report.
Good evening, I'm Romeo in town council. My name is Tim Berry, park and rec director. I apologize for the mask, but I am fighting something, I don't want to share with everybody else, so I thought I just
Thank you.
and not share, so. Each year, Park and Rec Commission reviews all the master fee schedule for park and rec facilities and rentals. They did this back in December and with a few additions and changes, have forward this on to town council for approval. Attached in the staff report is a resolution number one, starting off 2025 with a bang, as I say, and a comparison of some fees, we did a survey. There are three areas I want to update from the staff report that are highlights. First one was elimination of the park and rec tennis court keys. When the Park and Rec Commission had an ad hoc committee to decide about tennis court rules, we need pickleball courts coming on board. Commission looked at our revenue and expenses for tennis court keys and realized we weren't making a lot of money. It was more just the cost of the key would cost and replacement of the locks. And especially with the pickleball, with the ball wall going by the pickleball court, they wanted to free off from people to be able to use for recreation. So the first recommendation was to remove the cost of tennis court keys for the year. The second one was adding a time memorialized and special event permits for people who want to use a special event. We hadn't really had a time if public works needed to go and set up barricades, or if needed to order bathrooms or wash stations, it really was just, I worked with RJ to figure out what the cost was, and I wasn't able to give somebody a true cost. We're asking to put in a fee that says for a public work staff time, it's about $141 an hour for the work, either setting up or tearing down or working during the event, so that basically everything runs smoothly. If there's any problems, the renter has someone to go to to ask a question, or if there's any problems, it can be resolved. You have a power issue, there's a water main, or whatever else, there's somebody on site to handle that. And then the second part of that was just, you know, and a cost for a portable bathroom, which obviously Menke Park is our main park that's rented for a lot of our special events, there is no portable bathroom there. Adding in a cost of $900, basically for a weekend events for a main bathroom, an ADA bathroom, and a hand washing station. And obviously, that price goes up depending on how many additional restrooms they need, but that would be the base cost someone would have to incur, they wanted to have a special event in the park, just so we were upfront, and they knew what they were planning the cost would be. The last thing to highlight out of the master fee schedule is the, sorry, I don't have glasses and I can't see, I'm masked. The Corporal School Strick Foundation came and asked if they could be included in the town civic organizations to be able to use the rec center for free for their event. Currently, they offer one event a year at the community center. They usually currently are charged $1,000 for the rental and $1,000 deposit. The executive director came and spoke saying, you know, we really are working for the same group of kids, same community, if I can be able to fundraise more for the community and give back to Spark, which is a main funding source for both Hall and Middle School, Neil Cummins and Cove to help with programs, help with some teacher salaries and some additional programs the school can no longer fund. So they're asking that to be included in that. And my recommendation tonight is that basically, we try it out for a year, make it a pilot program, give them two free events and say, let's see how it looks. Come back next year, when I come back with master features, and say, it worked, it didn't. But basically, they would be considered a talented organization, we would draw up a building use agreement for them, and all the same thing we do with the Lions Women's Club for use of the facility for free for their events. So those are the three highlights of changes to the master fee schedule. A lot of it was very similar to last year. If anyone remembers last year, we did an increase last year about 10 to 15% on some facilities that hadn't been updated in quite a long time, and kind of caught us up to the median level where we should be. And at this time, those are my recommendations for the master fee schedule for this year.
Thank you very much. So first, are there any questions from the council? Go ahead, James.
Yeah. With the tennis courts, are they currently unlocked?
They are currently unlocked, correct.
Unlocked?
They are currently unlocked.
Okay. Has there been any vandalism, damage?
No, there is not.
Broken beer bottles?
No, I mean, we have not. I mean, obviously, when the weather warms up, it helps a little bit, but right now, they're still being used, but there haven't been any vandalism or anything. And the pickleball, dedicated courts are not open yet, hoping to open those soon, but as of now, there hasn't been any issues.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, also having to do with the keys. So the current fee doesn't cover the administrative costs, and so the decision has been made to eliminate a fee altogether. And I'm wondering, does that affect anything? What I'm trying to figure out is, since it wasn't covering administrative costs, should have, should the fee have just been raised? Or should it be eliminated altogether? And what I'm trying to understand is, you know, does that, was that fee offsetting anything? I mean, having a fee, is there any value to having a fee for that?
I think when I raised the tennis court fees, last year, there was quite a bit of resistance, just because it was a higher fee, it hadn't raised in over, I think, seven or eight years. With our new registration platform Civic Rec, we're able to basically let people reserve space online for no cost. So that will launch, and they can reserve spots, space on time in part of the ad hoc field committee, sorry, ad hoc tennis court committee. They designated certain hours for open play and reservation play, so that'll go up when the new, when the new system launches and the new pickleball court opens. So raising the key, I mean, we'd have raised it $10, $15 to cover it. And most cities and towns have gotten away from the key system, just because it is a hassle to make sure you have the right key, trade it out. They went to an online platform, so people could book stuff and know they had a reservation spot, because just because you had a key didn't mean you have a spot to play. Now with the system, you can, oh, I can see that it's open on this day, I can book it, I'll get confirmation on my phone, I'll show up, and I can play pickleball, tennis, whatever. So it was more security, and they can actually play the sport when they get there.
Okay, but there's no other fees associated with using the pickleball courts?
No, we do not rent the courts out for We do not rent the courts out for private lessons, the only thing we have is our tennis lessons we have through our Park and Rec Department, but there's no private lessons allowed on the courts, either Granada or Town Park.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's all I had.
Down here?
Yeah, I just have a couple. On the porta potties, nine hundred dollars a weekend. What happens if there's a special event during the weekday, because it's a holiday?
So that is a scheduled cost that the company has quoted us for that event. So if they need to bring out more, then the cost will go up, but that is a base fee for one porta potty, one station and one ADA porta potty.
Okay, and then the hundred and forty one, you may have said this, I'm sorry, I may have missed it. RJ's in a line with the hundred and forty one through DPW?
That is his number, yes.
Okay, all right, thanks. I may have a couple of comments, but thanks.
Eli? Nothing? Okay, I have just a couple of questions. On the tennis court fees, do Piper and Joe Wag charge anything, or they they first come, first serve as well?
Piper does not, I cannot speak to what Joe Wag does, but Piper does not charge any court fees at all.
Okay.
They have their own lessons like we do, but they don't have the ability to rent them out or pay a key fee. I think we and San Onofre, the last two towns that had a court, a tennis court fee, and they got rid of them about the same time we did, San Onofre did.
Okay. And then I know pickleball is popular and competitive. Are there time limits? Are there guidelines on how long they can use the court when they're there, or how do you?
So when the tennis court ad hoc committee met, we developed an all new rules for pickleball and tennis. We installed the new pickleball rack system, where basically it's kind of like the old quarter system for a pinball machine, it adds your next person up so that people can make sure who was going to be up next.
Okay. And then the question about special events, my question was four towns sponsored events, like Oktoberfest, like is is there an option where the town picks that up?
So I'm sorry, that will not be charged any of those towns of organizations, so that all those organizations will not be charged that event, that it be picked up like it has been in the past, so nothing's going to change.
So is that any organization or just town?
Any one of the towns, every organizations that are in the Masterfee Schedule is getting their facility for free would include it in that.
Okay.
So if the Women's Club wanted to event up there, same thing, if NRG wanted to do the same thing, none of those organizations would pay those fees.
Okay, so we'll kind of watch that and see how much it costs, right? We're gonna kind of
I think it's always been the past practice to support those organizations and cover those costs.
Okay. All right, so we'll open it up to the public now, are there any questions for staff regarding Parks and Rec and the fee? The revised fee schedule?
Hi. Good evening, members of the Town Council and Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, my name is Jamie Heaps and I am the Executive Director for Spark, the foundation that funds vital programs in the Larkspur Porta Madera School District. Spark supports our schools, you probably all know this, but just in case, by funding thirteen teacher salaries and programs that enrich our students' education, including STEM, art, music, counseling, wellness, Spanish, leadership. These programs not only enhance learning, but also strengthen our community by investing in its future, our children. Tonight, I respectfully ask the council to approve the Parks and Recreation Committee's recommendation to allow Spark to use the community center free of charge for our fundraising event. Our events are critical, as most of our annual budget is raised through community driven efforts. Waiving these fees would allow us to allocate more resources directly to the programs that benefit our students and families. Thank you for your consideration and for your continued support of our schools and our community.
And thank you for being here, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight who'd like to speak on this? If not, is there anyone online?
No hands raised from attendees online and no email public comment for this item.
Okay, so we'll come back to council for comments, anything down this way to start?
Yeah, I just have follow up question, it's something that Pat was asking. On the porta potties in DPW, you said that applies to town civic organizations, correct, where it's waived? Okay, we have Spark on here also, so is that applying to them also at this point in time? Or is it just use of the community center? I'm just trying to get clarification, by the way.
If they would have an outdoor event, yes, it would apply to them also.
Okay. That was the only question, I can totally support this. I appreciate the work that Tim you and the commission put into this. I know last year there's a lot more, there's a lot more fluid, because there's a lot more changes. But I think you did a good job of presenting it. I'm all for Spark, I think it's a great idea. I think if it works with the one year pilot program, we should also look at Redwood High School Foundation also. Potentially, it's in that invitation to them also, since they're part of our community too, but I can support it.
Yeah, I'm good with the proposed fee schedule as well, I think my only two thoughts, one, I would support adding Spark to our list of community organizations, appreciate what you guys do for our schools and have been, including when I went to those schools. And then I would also say, as far as court keys go, I think I'm I'm really supportive of the new direction that we've taken, getting rid of those court keys, I didn't realize that we were barely breaking even on that to begin with, that was fascinating. And as far as the question of, well, should we just raise the fees then, I think residents here pay taxes and I don't think that it's fair to ask them to pay extra money to then use the public amenities in our parks. I think that seems a little silly, so I'm I'm a fan of of the proposal to eliminate court fees as well. Thank you.
Over this way? Anything?
Councilmember Andrews, if you could.
Microphone, I'm sorry. Okay, so yeah, I'm going to support the the fee schedule is proposed, including the removing the tennis court fees.
Anything?
Just I support the the new fee schedules.
Okay, so I agree. I love the idea of Sparks being considered a community organization and receiving the benefits of that, so all sounds good, do I have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion, adopt resolution number oh one two oh twenty five, approving a revised Park and Rec Recreation Fee Schedule for fiscal year twenty five twenty six.
Second.
Oh, second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Okay, while Tim's here, we'll move on to six B, which is consideration and possible approval of the proposed Porta Madera Parks and Recreation Parks Special Donation and Memorial Program.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, I think I want to set this a little bit up, that this is a donation program. So these are people who are wishing to donate to the Town of Porta Madera for a bench or memorial plaque or a picnic table to be installed by public work staff and working in location with Park and Rec staff to find the best location. These are tax deductible donations for charitable donation to the town. The town has established a separate liability account, so that any money we bring in goes straight into the account and then pays back out to pay for the cost of the bench or any of the materials associated with, so it's strictly just in a separate account, just for these donations for the account. The Park and Rec discussed this item again on December sixteenth. They very much understood that there was kind of a hodgepodge. We never had a formal policy or a formal kind of application process. We kind of took each application as we got it and figured out, working with public work staff and Park and Rec staff, how does this work, how does it fit into the park, how does the bench work and all those things? So tonight, basically, we're trying to basically formalize a process that makes the most sense, that fits in the aesthetics of the town and that people idea of, hey, if I'm going to want to, you know, have a memorial bench for somebody or recognize somebody from an organization, here's the process you go through. We surveyed a couple of local cities, I've got them listed here, San Rafael, San Onofre, Valley, Sausalito. We shared a call today from the Town of Nevada, who are going through the exact same thing about things they're going to allow or not allow for donations, they're kind of curious, whatever comes out of this, they will and then work with their Town Council to figure out how to incorporate in theirs. Our goal is basically establish some kind of policies and guidelines, it's pretty simple, somebody knows exactly what they're getting. I would like to at some point make it to be available online, so you could fill out an application online, kind of like a Google form, so you could just fill it out or write a little PDF, so we could basically easily access the information. A couple of key things, you know, we, I worked very closely with Town Attorney Amy Ackerman and with RJ, so we go public work strike to make sure this all made sense, the application made sense, it covered all of our legal qualifications and and needs, and then that RJ could in fact, you know, install these benches with help from his staff on a timely manner, because the last thing I want is somebody to donate a bench and then it doesn't go up for six months a year, then it's kind of missed the meaning of it. A couple of things to pull out, one, plaque wording, it's pretty simple, the benches that we're recommending tonight are pretty standard. It's three lines and thirty words, it's pretty much, here's what you can fit. Kind of how we do the reader board, here's the kind of qualifications, read what you can, and here's what go on the bench. Locations, we worked out with Public Works and Park and Rec to say, give us your exact location, I want to have it. I'd love an aerial photo of this part of Menke Park right here, so I can go out with Public Works staff, does this work? What are my underground issues, what are here, what are not here, so that basically we can give them writing. Cost of benches are in the couldn't report. A basic replacement benches quoted from the Dumars Company that that's attached is about three thousand dollars. A brand new bench is six thousand dollars, which includes basically the work to prep the site. Worked directly with RJ and that to figure out, okay, if the bench is this much, how much is this? And the price that we came back was six grand. And then a plaque only would be a five hundred dollars, just basically if you had a plaque on an original bench, it's already there. Be printed on bronze and attached, there would be. Part of the biggest question I get is basically, is it forever? Do I, how long does the bench work? Basically, it's a ten year guarantee, so basically for the first ten years of life of whatever the donation is, the town will fix, clean, remove graffiti, paint, whatever need to be, but the bench is still serviceable. After ten years, if it's still serviceable, it's going to stay there, we're not going to take it out. Now, after ten years, if there's a problem, we'll go back to the donor and say, look, the bench is in disrepair, the picnic table is falling apart. What do you want to do? We'll give you first opportunity to re-up and get a new bench or picnic table if you don't. And I'll take it out and I'll offer it back to somebody else who wants that prime location or a spot to basically put it back. So the key is for the first ten years, we will take care of it. We will nurture it, we will make sure nothing happens to it, and then after that, you know, obviously we'll go back, and ten years is about the life cycle of a bench or picnic table that we've gotten from the company. And that's kind of the summary of it, attached is the application, is a draft form. Commission has given me some good input on some ideas and some formatting, and it's here for tonight for input and discussions.
If I, if I came, Mayor Rivasio, just add a a couple of remarks and just thank Tim for tackling this, this has been an issue or something that has come up for many, many years about how to, how can I make a donation to memorialize somebody who's dear, near and dear to somebody in our community? And I, it's, as you can see, there's a lot of thought that has to go into this, it's it's, and Tim really tackled this and brought in the RJ, Amy, and really tried to develop a program that met the objectives of what our community has been asking for, again, I don't know how many years, but this is something that we've heard, and now it's here to sort of discuss and hopefully get some good feedback and comments from you.
Thank you, Adam. Do we have any questions from council?
Yes, one question, and it was from a one of our constituents sent a question in about the actual three thousand dollars versus six thousand
Sure.
versus the cost of the bench. How often are you going to review these these quote prices unquote to reflect the fact that bench costs can go up and down?
My suggestion would be to add it to the Masterfee Schedule, so every year when I come back with the fees for anything else, we include it in the Masterfee Schedule and basically look at what current prices of benchings are and then just add it to there, so you can review it every year.
So wouldn't make sense to make a replacement bench cost plus ten percent, fifteen percent?
So this is based off the price, the actual bench we marked, we specked out, so for example, the bench alone was nineteen hundred dollars, the plaque alone was five hundred, the tax on it was almost two hundred, the shipping was almost three fifty, so that's where we got to that three thousand dollar mark. That was stripped from the company that we that we got the specs from. So I think it's something we review every year and bring back to say, hey, benches have gone way up or not going to go down, nothing goes down, but benches have gone up and we need to add to the cost of it, so that we can review it each year and commission can too.
Amy Ackerman, Town Attorney, I just, I just want to clarify that that the donors are making a tax deductible donation to the town, but they are not purchasing the benches, the town is going to purchase benches, use donations for maintenance, for other upkeep, for other things, so it's it's not a direct relationship here.
Anything, Rosa?
No, that our attorney was actually cleared up what I was
Okay.
Our attorney Ackerman cleared up what I was going to ask, so that's perfect.
I just have one question, because I know there was a second comment regarding, maybe it's standing up from benches, picnic tables, to also, she had non-standard amenities in there, but I think the one that sticks out the most is bicycle rocks. Was that ever considered?
Well, I think that's why I have the other option, so if someone decides they want to donate a waterfall. But basically would come, we do some research, figure out what the cost is, and then basically meet with RJ and figure out how much it costs to install pick a donation item, and then figure out how we can do it, so I think the standard is the benches, picnic tables. But if they, another option, then another item that we just have to do some research and work with the two departments.
Okay, so the bottom line is you guys are open to it?
Yes.
As long as it's reasonable and, yeah. All right, thanks.
Anything, Eli?
Nope.
Okay, just a a couple of questions, I too got the email regarding the possible wisdom of, you know, giving an estimate, but then making the policy actually cost plus so that you don't have to come back every year, but you're basically passing on whatever the actual hard cost is of the item, plus staff time equals the donation amount. And if if we could make it that, then we wouldn't have to revisit it every year and say benches cost this much and tables cost this much, I just think it would be easier for you and for us to have it in a system, and I'm supposed to be asking questions now, right? Sorry, my mistake. Okay, so the only question, the question I have is, does does that make sense? And then the other question is, with regard to, you know, what do we do once a bench starts deteriorating and it's got a plaque on it? I've noticed some of the plaques have the, I mean, some of the benches have the memorial plaque in the concrete footing at the base of the bench. Does that make more sense in terms of longevity of these things? Because then not only you put one, but you could put additional ones as time goes on.
I don't know what makes more sense for longevity wise, I know that the company we're looking at literally does the whole package, we get a completed bench with the plaque already engraved in it, so it's one complete package. I think the town dealt with each situation separately, some were in the ground clearly and some were on the bench, I think. I don't, I mean, I think a slab of concrete is going to last longer than a wood bench, so I think the question is then still at some point, you have to replace the bench. So if it's been, it's a ten year cycle, we still need to go back there and say, hey, we need to replace the bench. Do you want to replace the bench or do we take it out?
And do benches really only last ten years in general?
That is what life cycles is, ten years.
Okay, and if I, and I would just say, this is also just a first foray into this, we'll learn again as requests come in, sort of what people want, and then sort of can adapt on an ongoing basis as we see what is desired and the locations that work best and some of the other ones that may not, so.
Okay, so is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this issue? Either live or on Zoom?
There are no hands raised from attendees on Zoom, we did receive public comment via email, which was uploaded to the website. Is available for the public and was shared with council earlier today. No additional comments have been received.
Okay. Comments and or motion from anyone?
Happy to start, I think Adam and Tim really spoke to the the thoughts that I had, thank you for the work that went into this, this is an exciting step forward for us to be able to take charitable donations from members of the community who want to help directly, you know, help beautify the the town, so this is awesome. Tim, from from what you said about planning to fold this into the annual fee schedule, it sounds like that seems to be a plenty good mechanism for you guys to just update the cost as needed to make sure that, you know, we're not losing money on this, you can make it cost plus and just fold that right into your staff recommendation, so that sounds easy enough to me, and I think that's responsive to the public comment that we all received to that end. And then what Adam said about, look, this is a, this is like a kind of a, I don't want to say
to that end. And then what Adam said about, look, this is a, this is like a kind of a, I don't want to say a pilot program because it's not temporary, but it's, you know, it's, we're starting, we're trying something new and obviously will evolve based on what we're, we're learning, but we know that this is something that the community has been asking for. So it's exciting that we're here to deliver. So happy to support.
Okay, I am happy to support this as well. I just heard from my daughter who's visiting Australia and she said, Mom, there are picnic tables and benches everywhere on the side of the road. You can stop and have a picnic. So let's go more picnic tables, more benches will make Corder Madera that much more special. So do I have a motion from somebody?
I'm happy to move approval of the proposed Corder Madera parks.
Oh, are there any comments on the comments for this item?
You took
And we, do we do it one, just one time? Okay.
Yes, I'm happy to, to move approval of the Corder Madera Parks and Rec donation and memorial program.
Second. Second. Thank you, Rosa.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cassisa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Ravazia?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay, coming up next is six C, which is consideration impossible adoption of resolution O two, twenty twenty five, approving revisions to the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget and resolution three twenty five approving the amended reserve policy. And I believe we have a report from Daria.
Yes. Good evening, Town Council. You have before you the proposed budget revision, make your budget revision for the current fiscal year. At the time of the budget adoption, collective bargaining for all of the town employee groups had not been completed, nor had collective bargaining for Central Marin Fire Authority. So these updated expenditures.
I'm sorry, I just started to interrupt, but just if you can move the mic a little bit closer, because I know when people are listening online, it can sometimes not pick up unless it's like right close to your
Okay, and you have a lovely voice and we want to hear it. Okay, okay. And in addition, the books had not been closed at the time the budget was adopted, the books for the prior year. And so this current budget revision includes expenditures for the current year as well as the allocation of nearly $3.3 million in unallocated fund balance for the general fund for the previous fiscal year. So there are, there's the operating fund that's being proposed to be revised as well as a few of the capital funds and then the equipment fund. So I'll start with the general fund operating budget revision summary. So the revenue for this year is increased by $377,061. That's to match the current year expenditures that we're proposing and the, as a result of sales tax corrections, as you'll recall, there have been sales tax corrections and and many issues with sales tax varying in the years, but the town has recently received $408,000 in unbudgeted sales tax revenue in connection with a prior year. And we just learned today the town manager and I that we can expect another correction of, I think it was like, they say two or $300,000, I think for sales tax corrections for previous years. So we're proposing to increase the sales tax revenue by the $377,061. The, but the expenditures related to the current year are I've grouped them by department in, in the staff report. The first is administration and finance expenditures. That's, there's $2,000 of increases to salaries for overtime, primarily for finance department employees who have been working overtime. And then the other $53,800 is for human resources management. The human resources manager that was previously shared with the city of Larkspur as well as the police and fire JPAs has recently retired. And so I essentially doubled the budget compared to last year, which may be a little high, but it'll be necessary to pay the, the current or the retired human resources manager, any leave accrual that was due her. And then she was going to work a little bit, a couple of weeks overlapping with the new firm that we've recently signed a agreement with. And there may be additional charges related to NeoGov, which was recently implemented and the human resource manager may recommend other things to be added. Planning expenditures have increased by $66,206. $53,000 of that is for salaries, $5,024 for retirement and $7780 is for other benefits. The adopted budget included three and a half percent salary and collective bargaining and finalist salary adjustments resulted in 4% and then some other miscellaneous benefits. And additionally, a planner was hired at a higher salary than included in the adopted budget. That's most of the the increases, the fact that a planner who replaced someone who retired was hired at a higher salary than was included in the adopted budget. Building expenditures are increased by $70,000. That includes $30,000 for a fee study, which staff does anticipate that adjustments to the connection, to the fees in connection with this study will result in revenue sufficient to pay for the study as well as $40,000 related to building and inspection plan review services. There is vacancy in, for a plan review position. We're decreasing salaries by 20,000 and increasing contract personnel by 20,000. And that also has to do with the permit tech position, which has had vacancies and has been filled by, backfilled by a personnel agency. Code enforcement expenditures are increased by $19,544 and that includes adjustments to the salary schedule for the same reasons as planning that I went through, as well as $2,200 for training expenses. Engineering expenses are increased by $24,811, again, mainly for salaries and other benefits and retirement. Public works expenditures by $14,700. That has to do with paying off an employee who left the town employment, paying his accrued leave, increasing benefits for additional benefits that were improved in the mid-managerage resolution and then $6,800 for generator maintenance that was necessary. Fire expenditures are increased by $226,000. And that is a result of collective bargaining being completed after the budget was adopted. So when the budget was adopted, there was a 3.5% salary increase that was assumed. And we included a $125,000 contingency line item. But the actual salaries increased by six to 10% for most of the employees, depending on the length of the employment. And then what was not also included in the adopted budget is the fact that the Italian Battalion Chief's contract was reopened in order to be on the same schedule as the other employment salaries and to avoid compaction. And so that resulted in an additional $60,000 in expenditures. And then there was a contingency line item in the budget of $100,000, which is being reduced. So as a result, the $100,000 took care of just about everything that I mentioned, except for the fee study, which was 30,000, fire, which is the biggest of 206, 26,000 and the human resources, which was 58, 53,800. So and then, as I said, the current year expenses will be paid for by that increase in the sales tax that the town was fortunate to receive. Additionally, not related to the, the current year to, well, it is related to the current year, but it's as a result of last year's unallocated fund balance. There was approximately $3.3 million, which was unallocated at the time. The town finance committee met with staff in November to discuss recommendations for this balance. And after consulting with the finance committee, the staff is recommending the following. First is depositing $100,000 into the OPEB trust, the Other Post-Employment Health Benefits Trust to fund obligations that the town has incurred in connection with retiree health benefits. Right now, the, the the, or the liability is 73% funded. And according to the most recent actuarial report, the town does not need to make a contribution this year, but the, the thinking behind doing so is that it will make it more likely that the town continues to stay ahead of its obligation, its liability for future years, given the fact that many times the actuarial assumptions do change and, and result in, you know, greater liability. And then $2 million for other transfers to other funds is being recommended as well. $600,000 to the equipment fund to purchase an ambulance and associated equipment for CMFA. The town does collect ambulance fees and a paramedic tax for the purpose of providing paramedic services. And last year, the town collected 1.478 million dollars in ambulance fees and over $530,000 in paramedic tax. And the fire chief has indicated that the fire authority does need to replace the ambulance and purchase two automated external defibrillators to ensure appropriate levels of service. So, and that's what the $600,000 is. And then another million dollars is recommended to be transferred to the town Capital Projects Fund in order to increase investment in infrastructure in future years. And that's as a result of projects identified in the recently adopted storm drain master plan as well as climate adaptation planning efforts. And then $400,000 to the recreation capital fund to create a source of funding over the next several years related to the parks and recreation facility master plan or other park improvements that may be necessary. And so that's the, the $2 million, those three items. And then additionally, staff is recommending increasing the general fund operating reserve from 20% to 30, to a range actually of 25 to 30% of expenditures and transfers out. And that's the equivalent of about three to three and a half months of operating expenditures. Best practices indicate that the town's operating reserves should be relate to the relative risk of funding sources and that a range rather than a fixed percentage is appropriate to, to provide flexibility when it, when it's needed. So the, the finance committee and staff recommended increasing the reserve to 25% with the goal of reaching 30%. And that's related to the relative dependence of and unpredictability of sales tax revenue as a source of town, the town's operating budget. So increasing the reserve to 25% would increase the reserve by $1,173,000 for a total reserve of $5,867,000. So that's the operating fund. Do you want me to wait, stop there for questions or go on to the, the other funds?
Why don't you give us the full report?
Okay, all right. Okay. So then the capital fund, as I mentioned, includes a transfer in from the general fund to, of a million dollars to the town capital fund, the fund that was established in order to fund town infrastructure projects. And so that million dollars and then adding expenditures of 101,996,000. And that was, has actually already been spent on town hall construction in excess of the amount included in this year's budget. And that was previously brought to the council. The Park and Lou fund, that is just to carry over expenditures that were budgeted last year, but paid this year in connection with the town restroom project. So that's just a timing difference and it's not really doing anything. The, the Recreation Capital Fund is adding in that $400,000 from the general fund that I just mentioned. And then also adding carryover expenditures. Again, having been, that were budgeted last year, but didn't get spent until this year. That's 52,369 for that same town park restroom project and then $43,000 for park deficiency improvements that were spent this year, even though they were, they were budgeted and unspent last year. And then to the, the fund where the town records the, the Transportation Authority of Marin Revenue and the grants. And the, the town anticipates receiving a grant as reimbursement for an online solar permitting system that the town is planning on implementing. And then the expenditures in the same amount are also included here. So that would just be a wash. And then the only fund under the category of other funds is that, is the Equipment and Technology Fund. There's the $600,000 transfer in that was just mentioned a minute ago in connection with the ambulance. And then we're adding expenditures that were that were budgeted, well, the 600,000 for the ambulance, of course, but then the other 215,000 were items that were largely budgeted last year, but not spent and are being spent this year. It's some town hall technology equipment in the amount of $7,000. And then 30,000 for the, the purchase of new recreation department software and 19,900 of this was budgeted last year. So really the town is spending about 10,100 of new money on that. The Vector truck that was recently purchased was seven, closer to $700,000 rather than the $600,000 that was included in the budget. And then we're adding $60,000 to, for the completion of the digitization of town records. And then 18,769 for town hall furnishings, of which 10,000 was budgeted last year, but not spent in the previous year. So as a result of all of this, the overall impact to the general fund budget will result in a reduction of 2.1 million dollars. This entire amount will be paid for from the unallocated ending balance in the previous fiscal year. $2 million will be transferred to other funds and $100,000 will be paid to the town's OPEB trust. The current year increase in expenditures will be offset by the increase in sales tax revenue and will not affect the ending balance. And then 1,173,426 dollars from the previous year's unallocated ending balance will be used to increase the operating reserve to 25% of expenditures and transfers out. The town capital projects fund is funded by the general fund, as you know. The estimated ending balance after this budget revision will be $832,000 and that assumes expenditures of $600,000 for the Tamil Pies over crossing project and $200,000 for parks improvements. The Park and Lou fund will be zero as a result of this. Developer fees were collected in lieu of dedicating lands for parks and it was used for projects related to parks. The Recreation Capital Fund balance will be estimated to be $477,838 as a result of this budget revision. Well, there's no impact to the, to the fund where the grants are recorded because the proposed expenditures will be offset by the anticipated revenue. And the equipment fund balance will be approximately $393,965 as a result of this budget revision. And that is the end of this report.
Thank you very much, Daria. Your, your mastery of the details always impresses me and I really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Really appreciate all your work. Questions?
On page six, they refer to a Vector truck and to display my ignorance, what is a Vector truck versus a street sweeper truck?
So the Vector truck is the one that essentially has that big hose that sticks out of the top of it and sucks up
Okay.
stuff out of this, usually sewer from the centaur sewer system.
I thought we'd use Roy's service for that. Or is that just a contractor?
We have our own as well. They, they can come in and need be on a emergency basis as well. But yeah, we have our own.
Adam, as a general comment in the future, if you can sort of show the old, I'm big on spreadsheets. So if you can show the old budget, the changes, then the new numbers that make it easier for me to follow. I did like your write-up telling where everything went. But at the last page, I like to look at a spreadsheet and say, okay, bottom line. So, but thank you.
Thank you.
Turn myself off.
Thanks as always, Daria. We're going to miss you.
It's like this is the last of your reports I get to enjoy. So in relationship to the reserve and how that's determined, so there's a range and they decided, the finance committee decided that 25% was the, where we were going to be this time.
Right. To start at 25% and then have the goal of reaching the 30%, right?
And if I can comment on that, Councilmember Thomas, I, I mean, this is also a very strong recommendation from staff as well. And we came to the finance committee with this as a proposal. You know, Daria and I have been thinking a lot about this and knowing the volatility of our sales tax revenue. So with an opportunity, when the opportunity presented, you know, itself with the unallocated ending balance from last year, I think we all thought it was a good idea. I consulted, you know, with Councilmember Cissé before going to the finance committee as well. And I think it was a good process to sort of get that confirmation at the finance committee. But it is a, a range where you set sort of the, the base and then shoot for a goal, knowing that, you know, it, it's not a be all, end all sort of, I wouldn't call it. And this is sort of going to be, I think, somewhat semantics about what we call it. If we're not at 30% every year and we're between 25 and, and 30, it's, I wouldn't call it dipping into reserves necessarily, but you're, you know, you're shooting to increase that reserve or be at that 30% mark every year.
Right. Well, that's sort of what I was going to ask about is the idea of the fact that that is kind of dynamic. That so will, would that be revisited at different points in the year where you see, oh, you know, the trend is that, you know, tax revenue, sales taxes going up. So should we adjust? Or it's going down, should we adjust that reserve number? I'm just wondering, would it be a moving, would it be dynamic that way? Or is it sort of set once you put it in place for a particular year?
I think, well, I think we're saying that 25% is going to be the bottom.
Is the bottom. Okay.
The way that currently are, the policy right now is 20%. But it's that range up between 25 and 30 where it's more dynamic as you're, as you're referencing. And I don't know if we would need to adjust it other than just to note where we are in, in sort of that range at any given point in time, I guess, at whether it's a, probably at the end of the fiscal year, we would sort of make that, do that analysis. Once the books are closed and whatnot, you have that clear information. Daria, anything you want to?
No, I was just going to say the same thing. It would be hard to do it, I think, before the books were closed because we wouldn't know the exact amount we had to work with.
Okay, yeah. And I, and that clarifies it for me because I was thinking, if you're looking, are you making that the 25% the goal?
I think the goal is, is 30%, but we're starting with 25%.
Thank you. Questions down here?
Yeah, I just have a couple. I think we're putting a million in unrestricted CIP. Do you know how much total right now we have unrestricted CIP?
Unrestricted, it would just be that million less the 101,000 that was already spent. So it would be, I guess it would be eight, that 832,000 that, yeah, 832,000, including that million. Because 101,000 was already spent on, on the town hall overage. So if we, if they went around and spent the 600,000 that is planned out of that, that, that you're, you're talking about the Town Capital Projects Fund, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Yeah. If they spent that out of their, you know, and then they also spent the 200,000 that is currently, currently in the budget for that, yeah, it would be just over 800,000 that would be, would be left in there.
Okay. Do you ever earmark any of that unrestricted has emergency funding in case? I'll have comments regarding the unrestricted part, but I'm just trying to get at, is any of that, say we have 800,000 there, is 500,000 dedicated towards an emergency type thing, hillslide, whatever, that we, we're not, it's not planned. We have to go in and fix.
Sure. We have the, one source of that is the reserve that we have with the sales tax fund with 2.5 million dollars.
Right.
And so that's really what that was intended to be for, which was, would go to those emergencies. And I've, I've been educated with OEM that we don't want to call our reserves emergency reserves. So I'll just note that. But yes, reserves for unexpected occurrences that may happen in town. So of the Town Capital Project Fund, no, we have, we haven't in the past designated any sort of reserve as part of that fund.
But the, but yes, but as, as the town manager indicates, the, the Port of Madera Sales Tax Fund, which is not being revised and not mentioned here, does currently have the 2.5 million dollar reserve, which we're not, which we were calling emergency reserve, but now I guess we're just calling reserve. But it's for emergencies.
And I just have a couple more. If you don't mind through the, through the mayor, since Chief Martin is here with Central Marine Fire, can you just briefly get into the ambulance and the equipment you need? Because I know I sit on RVPA board member, which I know you're part of also. And they're doing the same thing where we approved, I think, up to 525,000 to buy, to replace medic 18. And we're replacing 14 with the new ambulance, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you, Councilmember Cissé, Honorable Mayor and members of the council, Ruben Martin, Fire Chief for the Central Marine Fire Authority. Yeah. So about every five years through our fleet replacement program, we typically try to replace our frontline ambulance, which then gets put into our reserve status as backup ambulance. And then our ambulance is 10 years and older and beyond, then gets surplus. A little history on why Port of Madera is being asked for, to pay for the ambulance. Prior to the merger of Port of Madera and Larkspur Fire Departments and creating Central Marine Fire Department, Port of Madera as a standalone through its paramedic tax and ambulance revenues, supported having paramedics here within town. Once the merger was created, those funds remained within the town of Port of Madera as a collection point for us. And so what happens is Port of Madera utilizes those funds to then to go ahead and offsets their expenditures into outside services, which is the fire department fund. And then every five years, we so come in, we talk to the city manager and talk about replacement needs and fleet replacement. And this go around was time to replace our ambulance. The last time we purchased it was in 2019 when a town manager, Kusmano, was still here. And then it was about 385,000. In the last five years, we've seen it go up about 100,000, which is still very significant, but it's a fraction of what we're seeing with the rest of our apparatus fleet.
And then you do a piggyback type contract, try to get a better deal?
Yes, we do. And so what we do is both RVPA purchasing agent ourselves, we usually throw, go through a third party, kind of like Sourcewell or a cooperative purchasing agreement where they've already gone through the bidding process. And then we try to go onto a ambulance company that designs these and try to see if we can get more bang for our buck. So that way we can try to be a little more efficient with our resources that we have. So typically if we buy in bulk, you get a better price. And then, but it also depends on the platforms that we're looking at. So far, the platform that we look at is pretty good. Ross Valley is looking at a separate platform, but we still are looking at, can we get the best price for what, for what we can for ambulances that are out there? The same thing is with our cardiac monitors. Those also have a life or a finite lifetime where technology is always outpacing than what we have available. So with the new cardiac monitors that are out there, they, we've been advised that the motherboards or the software that is currently within our heart monitors will no longer be supported. Similar to going from an iPhone nine to like an iPhone 12, technology goes up there. Just as a similarity, looking at that. The nice thing about the new cardiac monitors is that they'll able to be able to give real-time telemetry of your cardiac rhythm to the hospital. Right now, we can send it via fax or via email as a snapshot. This will actually, the doctor and the cardiologists can actually see it in real time, which for us, it's a game changer when it comes down to providing excellent care to our community.
And this, this request would actually, I think, purchase two of those.
Yes, correct. So what we're doing is through the RVPA, they're purchasing two of them for us, which covers the Larkspur half of the shop. And then through the purchase and the request here is to purchase two new, what we call LifePak 35s, which is the newest version. One to go on the ambulance and then one to go on FireEngine 13 for the paramedics. And then what we do is with the old monitors, we're actually getting a rebate because we're actually able to return them to the vendor for a, for kind of a trade-in program.
Thanks.
And with that, I'm open for any questions. Okay.
Just acknowledge that we have CMFA here. And also I know we have several of our crew down helping with the LA fires as well. So just acknowledge the great work of our, our team.
Thank you for that too.
Okay. Um, other questions? Eli, anything?
No questions. I'll just have a couple comments.
I just have one question. What is solar permitting?
It's, so solar permitting, it's, it's related to recent state law that actually required each and every permitting agency in the state to actually go to an online permitting model for solar installations. And so that was the town through grant, there was some grants provided, but did have to expend money to get ours up and running. And that was done, I think, at the end of September. And so now anybody wanting to, you know, get, get new solar installations can go through it streamlined. It's about streamlining essentially the permit application process and approval process for solar.
Thank you. I pictured Tim out there with a solar panel giving permits out. Thank you very much for that. So that's all with questions. Is there anybody from the audience who would like to make a comment on this matter regarding the budget adjustments mid-year? And anybody online?
No hands raised from attendees online and no email public comment for this item.
Okay. I'll come back to the council for comments and possible motion.
All I wanted to say was that I'm very supportive of the $100,000 OPEB deposit and of increasing our reserves from 20 to 25% with a goal of 30%. I think this council and past councils and our staff did a lot of hard work turning around Port of Madera's finances and taking us from near bankrupt to, I think, probably in the strongest financial position of any city in Marin. So that is awesome. And I just want to say how much I appreciate that we're not kind of just sitting back on our laurels now that we've done that and that we're staying proactive, staying on top of it to make sure that we are really circling the wagons, you know, in, in the face of uncertain future. So just wanted to, to call that out and congratulate the, the staff and the council on this.
Anybody else? Comments?
Oh, I just want to make a proposal, but go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the changes. I just want to remind everybody that we should not become complacent with respect to fiscal responsibility. We're very fortunate. We have the malls, we have the dealers. Everything runs in economic cycles. And we've been very fortunate because we've been on a high economic cycle for a long period of time. It doesn't mean that that's going to continue. So I just want to stress that we still should make sure from a cultural standpoint and a top-down approach that everybody understands, we still have to have fiscal responsibility. And I've always said on our budget, we should be managing the budget and not to numbers, just to get that out there. I wouldn't like to make one change. Hold on, I gotta dig it up. And again, it may just be a play on words. In the resolution, instead of using, increase the amount, sorry, hereby increase to the amount of 25 to 30%, I'd rather see, say, increase that we have a minimum of 25% to a maximum of 30%. It's a little bit play on words, but I think that has more power when somebody's reading it, they're just saying, we have a range. So I would just like to see that change in there. And then I would like to get pro formas on what we're changing sooner rather than later and not wait months to get those. Because it's hard for me to envision these changes without looking at them, like Jim was saying, side by side, you know, year to date, that kind of stuff.
So is that a request for actually turning this document in the mid-year budget? Or can we work on that for?
You can work on that. I just don't want to get it like, and it should go to all of us. Because again, it's hard to visualize. In other words, I'll give you an example. I can't tell how much of a surplus we're going to have next year because these numbers are not in any type of format that would show us that. And we're doing all these changes.
Okay. Yeah, understood. I think the, I think the bottom line, if I'm not mistaken, Daria can correct me, is that really from an operating standpoint, the only we did have, we did change the sales tax revenue based on sort of the unanticipated increase that we had. And that's essentially netting out zero due to the increased expenditures. And so at the end of the day, the operating, we're not really changing that expected surplus at the end of the year. The unallocated is then going into funds to separate funds. That's off the books.
Okay. I guess what I'm trying to say is if you go back to 4B, which there's a budget comparison in here, all I'm looking for, which I think Jim, we all may be looking for the same, because Eli's shaking his head, is that format with the changes.
Okay.
Or you could add two columns, one column with the changes by category.
Understood.
And cross foot.
I think if, I'm looking at Daria and Daria can communicate that to me, but that also brings me, before you vote, I'd like to say a couple of words. If now's the appropriate time, I'm, I'm looking at Mayor Rivas.
That's fine. Yes.
Yeah. So I, you know, I don't know if we can get that done by next Monday, but that's unfortunately going to be Daria's last day, official day with the town. I think she has offered to sort of help us over the weeks, final week of January and into the, into February. And also will be attending the fire council meeting in February as well, which is a huge help. So you know, it's, this is always really tough to say goodbye to somebody like Daria, who's been such an incredible staff member, support, as such an incredible community member for our team, but also has done such great work for our town. She's making a career change, as we all know, after about eight years, almost eight years with the town. She's going to be moving on to the nonprofit sector, which is great. It's a different mission with the Marin City Health and Wellness Center, where we all know she'll continue to do great work on behalf of our local community. You know, I think we sometimes forget, but Daria really oversaw, and maybe Councilmember Andrews will remember, a dramatic shift from the, you know, the great George Warman and, and sort of his processes and.
His abacus, which he would use.
Yes. But, but Daria really, you know, as you might imagine, after 40 plus years of one person doing things one way, it was, she had to get in there and actually make that transformation happen and bring us to where we are today, which is, I would say, you know, using, you know, more modern processes and, and ways of evaluating our finances. New systems such as Open Gov, transport, transparency portals that we now have online, where everybody can go in and look at the budgets and accounting, and also including our payroll and budgeting systems. So I, I also should mention, she's also served as our, essentially the finance director or the senior finance individual for CMFA. And so that's been something as well she's taken on over the last many years since CMFA became an entity. She's just been incredibly dedicated to the cause and the mission, to the rest of the team, to all of us. She works so hard on weekends frequently. Well, she'll be the, likely sometimes the only one in the office and just, you know, it's, it's, it's something that I've recognized. It's, you know, you know, it's, it's, it's something that I've recognized. It's, you know, there's deadline, there's things that you just are not going to drop off. And, and Daria recognizes they have to get done. And, you know, I think it's a testament to just your dedication to the town and to your, your own work. And so you will be very much missed and, but wish you all the, all the best in your next endeavor. And we'll see you, I'm sure, around. So.
Thanks. Thank you. I'm happy that I had the chance to work here for the last eight years. Happy that I am able to end my career in the public sector here. Happy to have worked with everyone here. Thank you. Thank you very much, Daria. I would just say that I have always thought of Daria as being like proof that we are fiscally responsible, that we are doing the right things with the funds that come our way, including investing them in, in really worthwhile projects. And Daria, you have done such a great job of, of letting us all know not only where we are, but making us realize that, you know, with the help of the manager, the manager and the finance committee, it's just felt like we've had this really solid thing. And I'm a little worried going forward that we might not be as comfortable with the whoever comes along. So if you want to change your mind, talk to Adam.
Thank you. You know, it's probably too late for that. Okay, so the only comment I had on the actual budget itself was I really like this one million in capital improvement set aside. I'm hoping it's not just for sewers and, and flood, but that is available for other projects, other things that come up in town. Because while four hundred K for parks is a start, if you look at the master plan for parks and recreation, there's, there's just millions of dollars in, in suggested improvements. And I think we're starting to hear from the community that they, they want to see some of those things actually happen. So glad to see the retail world is hanging in there long enough for us to make some meaningful investments in the town. Hope it continues to do so. Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes. I'd like to propose resolution number O two slash twenty twenty five.
Second.
We can do two separate motions if you'd like, since the proposed amendments from Councilmember Casisa are related to resolution number three, twenty twenty five.
Okay, so take two votes.
The first one?
Yeah, we could do that. So we have a motion and a second for adopting resolution number O two, zero two, twenty twenty five. Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casisa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
And I'll move the passage or the adoption of resolution number O three, twenty twenty five with the minor amendments made by Councilmember Casisa.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casisa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay, coming up is our last regular business item for tonight, which is the preview of the strategic planning workshop scheduled for this Thursday morning at nine o'clock. Adam, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. So I thought since we had this meeting right before Thursday and the agenda was just going to, you know, came out on Friday, that we could actually just pop in and have a very brief last second, if there are questions or, you know, anything of council wanted to flag at this point in time for Thursday, this might be a good opportunity to do that. Hopefully you all, first and foremost, you put in your lunch orders. So I hopefully you got that done because I think that's, we're not going to get much done unless we have some good food to eat. So we're going to hold that here, of course, and we're going to rearrange the room and, and sort of, I think I'll be down here faced in a little bit different direction, but and, you know, I think just big picture, I've felt really good about the last couple of work plan meetings that we've had. I think it's, they've been pretty, they've been very successful in, in really setting clear direction for staff and allowing staff to sort of embark on the year with a lot of knowing that we're aligned with the town council and the town council's direction. And I think it's one of the big reasons why we were, we've been able to accomplish so as much as we have in the last couple of years. It's really, you know, getting that clear direction from the town council. And I think it's been a credit to the town council, being able to work together at these meetings and ensuring that staff's work is really aligned with the council priorities. And that's what this is really all about, so that we can, yeah, and like I said, just start, start moving forward as a team and as, as, as a town staff in a direction that we all feel comfortable with and solid about. And so I just am looking forward to another great meeting with all of you. And I haven't, you know, I think especially last year, I thought, you know, a good opportunity, we're going to use the same, essentially the same agenda. Allow the council members an opportunity at the beginning to sort of, maybe things have changed in a year, but a new opportunity to sort of speak on priorities. We'll have the categories arranged and whatnot and then, and then have a staff presentation. So really a similar format. And I'm not expecting anything necessarily right now, but I just thought I'd open it up and see if there are any logistical questions that you had or other comments that you wanted to relay to me at this point in time after seeing the staff report and the draft work plan, obviously, we're, to be very clear, we're, we're not, there's not going to be any actions or taken by the council at this meeting. It's really a discussion. We'll come out of the meeting with, the last thing we'll do at the meeting is getting that, making sure that we're all on the same page about what was discussed and the direction. And then we'll put that into a staff report for hopefully in, hopefully in early February for the council to accept and approve. And then we can take it from there. So that's essentially the process. I'll, I'll leave it there. So.
Do you have questions?
Well, no. One thing I'd like to see, and I don't know whether this event is the proper place, but the last time I sort of had a good feel of how many town employees we had and what departments they were and what they did was when I rolled off council in twenty twenty. So do you have some sort of comparable sort of comparison? So I can look at the head counts by department from.
Me twenty?
Yeah.
No, no, not right now, but I could, I mean, we can look back at the budgets, probably have it, the organizational chart at that time.
Okay.
And at least get that information if that's helpful.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I don't have questions. I had a couple of comments. I can wait. I mean, they're simple comments. It's not anything.
Is that okay if we go ahead to comments and then do public response after? Yeah. Either way, public comments, anybody? Anybody online?
We do have a hand raised from Roy Wolford.
Hello, Roy. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Back in May twenty twenty two. I presented council and asked them when they're siding with the values. And I'm getting, and I'm getting some. See, see. Going on, going on.
Roy, I'm sorry. We have a really bad connection and we're hearing about every third or fourth word of your.
Yeah, I'm getting feedback. Hold on a second. I'm not sure what's going on. Okay, how is?
Uh, might be better. Try again. Go ahead.
Hold on, hold on. How's this? You getting anything?
Go ahead, Roy.
Yeah. I'm getting, I'm getting. Don't know where you're coming from.
Go ahead and continue, Roy. Maybe speak clearly into your microphone. On our end, there isn't anything that we're doing or adjusting. I think it's, it might be on your end.
One, two, three. Now it's still going on and feeding back.
Roy, maybe you could send us an email and we'll have Lorena distribute it to us. Would that be all right?
Uh, we're just talking the issue right now.
Well, now you sound fine. So keep going.
Okay, okay. Hopefully it continues on. I know I'm getting a feedback.
Hey, Adam.
In May of twenty twenty two, I asked the council not to implement DEI for its mission and values. And of course, the town, the council members were very excited about having required DEI education for all the staff. And they were elated about it. And actually, I think it was forced brainwashing. But DEI is not a good program. Now, I spoke at one of the mayor's meet and greet meetings. This was Fred and Adam was at the, on the line. And I talked a little bit about DEI. And I've also sent the town a lot of information and staff about the negatives of DEI. So I would ask the town to exclude DEI as its mission and values. Now, one of the things that I had spoke to Fred about, and I wanted to sit down and just talk with the, the entire council members, but he passed it on to Adam and Adam was good enough to meet, to meet, meet with me in November of twenty twenty two. And we had an hour to two hour conversation, good conversation. But DEI was implemented at the federal level. It was actually DEIA. So the A stands for access. And I had shared that document with, with the town. It's, it's in the record somewhere. And as of today, oh, one of the things I'd mentioned is DEI actually started out as diversity, inclusion and equity. They got kind of a chuckle to that, but they, they went with DEA because what's DEA? Hmm, what is that? That's God. So is that a new religion? Okay. But D, diversity, inclusion and equity, they didn't like the acronym, so they changed it. Do you know what the D, the inclusion or diversity, inclusion and equity is? It's D I E. Well, as of today, it's D I E D at the federal level. So have you all heard about that? It's no longer a federal program. It's being, it's being rescinded and it's being deceased immediately. So again, I asked the town to rethink the inclusion in the equity piece. It's just another piece of DEI. So thank you for listening to me. Apologize for the mic issue.
Thank you for your comments, Roy. Okay, we will proceed to, we don't need to take a vote on anything related to the work plan meeting. So we can move on and we'll move on to council reports.
I think comments, were there any comments?
Oh, were we, were we in the middle of comments or did we finish? Were there more comments for Adam?
We just had two quick comments. And I'll be honest with you, I didn't look at the work plan in detail.
I just have a couple of comments and I didn't look at it in detail. I'll be honest. I think I was more focused on the budget stuff and business items tonight. I couldn't tell if the blue arrows, if those are items are continuing from prior years or if there's any confusion, if you can just put what year we actually started that item. But again, I didn't look at these in detail, so I can't tell if some of them are from prior years. But this way we can track how long, you know, if it's two years ago or three years ago.
And, and I think that's a good comment because we did change a little bit of the meaning of what the arrows are. So actually, and I want to thank Lorena for helping put this together, but under the chart, there's a status. And so the R means it's returning from twenty twenty four. I can, we can, we can certainly, if it returns from a prior year before that, I will, we will note that.
Okay, thanks. And the only other suggestion is you may want, you may want to think about pulling out, there's only two on here I see for SD two and just dropping them down, just dropping them down here and just putting SD two up here, labeling it that way. And those two items there. So it's not all, because they are separate, technically they're a separate entity. Though again, just, I would keep it on the same format, same page. Just drop it down so that they're separate and label it ST and Terry District two.
And I will say, one of the things we did try to do was make these more action oriented items that were not sort of, and helped bring down the total number. As you can see, we're at fifty-five rather than I think last year at seventy-two. So, and things that were recurring, sort of things that have now become part of the regular way of doing business, we didn't lose intentionally on that work.
And I have more on Thursday, but thanks.
Anything else? I just, I just have one comment. I mean, you, but one thing that I don't know if you can organize, if you want to even reorganize by Thursday, but there are three different entries about trees in town. And I know you're going to be working with a, a master arborist. So maybe those three, all the tree things should sort of come together so that we have almost like a master plan for trees.
And that's great. You know, and this is a draft, so we can take these comments in and talk about them at the meeting too as well.
That's what I'm thinking. We don't need to do it now.
But I appreciate, yeah, that.
Okay.
Heads up on that one for sure.
Anything else? Jim, Rosa, Eli, Fred? Okay, let's move on then to town manager reports.
A couple. One is you may have noticed that the EV charging stations have been installed. So that's very exciting news. It's still going to be a little bit of time before they're operational. We're setting, working, we're setting up the, the software programming piece of it. And you obviously have to, as part of that, that will be implementing the fees that the council approved back in December and making sure everybody knows how to use them and track things on them. So that it's still at, at least a week out, hopefully a right around a week. I'm not, I just don't want to give a definitive date on when they're going to actually be turned on, but I will let the council know when that's the case. So you can come by and try them out or see other people using them. And then secondly, I, I happened, this is just from this evening, but I happened to head over to Amy's just to get a bite before the meeting and was pleasantly surprised to see that they actually have reusable foodware now, uh, which is the metal forks and bowls and things like that. So as you recall, they were one of the businesses that had their model was sort of built around compostable, I'll call them plastics, you know, compostable products, utensils that there's questions about actually doing that, whether they could actually be composted here. But our ordinance sort of said, hey, no, if you're dining in, you need to use the actual reusable thing. So I was very happy to see that they have now gone that direction. So.
Did that count as a staff inspection of our foodware ordinance?
I know. Well, it's a, absolutely. Checked, I checked the box and brought my names over.
Good job. Hey, no remarks from the peanut gallery. Okay, council reports, Fred?
Yeah, before I go through the mayor, Chief Mark, do you mind just saying maybe a few words, LA fires? And I can't remember if engine fifteen was deployed down there, if they're back or if they're still deployed. And there was other Marin County fire crews that went down there. Again, just really quick. Thanks.
What I'm going to introduce is our battalion chief Ezra Coleman, who's been running the operations and the one that's been responsible for deploying our resources out there. But just a quick update, we did send two fire engines down there with total six personnel and three overhead positions. We've gotten a few of those folks back, which is good for us, but we still have some folks down there deployed in. Ezra will be able to give you an update.
Nailed it. So countywide, I think we sent over a hundred individuals to support all the fires that were happening down south. Our agency got multiple requests. We were able to fill all of them. We do fire engines, like I said, Doug. Administration, Megan's down there on an overhead team. We've got people on the USAR team. We've got people doing damage inspection assessments. So all the structures that were lost, partially lost, undamaged are all getting inspected by our farmer, our fire inspector, Chris Jewell. We still have one of our type three engines down. They're staged and. Um, we still have one of our type three engines down. They're staged in Beaumont in Riverside County, kind of on a wind hold uh, for the next 24 hours. And we're actually sending a relief crew down Thursday morning because they've done their 16 day tour. So they'll come home, we'll send a fresh crew down and who knows what's going to happen from there. Hopefully we, uh, catch a weather break and, uh, everybody can kind of start to pick up the pieces. So another unfortunate example of what can happen and, uh, where the media takes it, what actually happens. Um, and you know, the city staff, the fire staff, you know, council members are, you know, I won't say emergency fund, but you know, all of that stuff is there for a reason. And LA County Fire Chief really summed it up. This wasn't a vegetation fire. This was an urban conflagration. Um, that started in, in, in the wildland and, and there is a lot that's coming. And Chief Martin and, and, uh, our hazard mitigation specialist, Todd Lando are already starting to hit the boots on the ground as far as what our spring is going to look like as far as vegetation management inspections, questions from the community to which I'm sure you guys are going to receive. So, um, we're happy to support you guys for sure.
And, and on that, there has been some messaging coming out from Mark, Mark Brown, MWPA, Fire Safe Marin. And you know, I think a push is to really try to get consistent messaging, um, around what's actually happening and, and what we're doing here, obviously to support community, um, and answer those questions that are coming in. So if you haven't gotten that out, you know, let me know. Um, but I think that's been disseminated to all the council members as well. Okay. I'm seeing some heads nod. That's good.
Can, can I just ask a question on this, um, while we're talking about it? Is there any cost recovery? I mean, the town expends this money to go down there and does it come back to us in any way or? How does that happen?
Yeah. So through our, uh, CFAA, which is an agreement through CALOES, we, it's a fully reimbursable event.
Wow.
So whatever we set down there, we get coverage for the people that are down there plus funds to cover them back here on an overtime basis. So, um, typically we try to recover as much as we possibly can. We'll usually break even. Um, but it's definitely a resource that we try to utilize is we try to send and help our neighbors the best we can. Because I know it's someday we're going to be asking for that same reciprocity. So it's, um, it's a great opportunity to, uh, help our neighbors down there. And for me, it's, it's a special, uh, note, I'm originally from Southern California. So a lot of the places and neighborhoods that are down there, I'm very close and familiar to. So it's, uh, definitely hits home for a lot of us. So.
I was down there for the storm and the 100 mile an hour winds and they were, it was, it was pretty crazy. There were branches coming down everywhere. It was.
Yeah. So for us is, uh, Adam Wolfe mentioned is we're working with both Marin wildfire prevention authority, Fire Safe Marin, all the fire, um, professionals within the county to try to have a unified voice. And then, okay, what do we do now to try to help mitigate this or as a community to be more resilient? So something doesn't hit this, something like this doesn't occur or something doesn't occur. How can we keep it as a minimal impact as possible? And I think as a county, I think we're one step ahead as the rest of the state is with, uh, I think from lessons learned from 2017 when our neighbors to the north burnt. We really looked, took a deep dive into what can we do to try to prevent an incident like this happening within our own. And with that, I think our citizens, you know, uh, heard the calling and decided to tax ourselves. So thank you to them for allowing us to be able to create MWPA, which now provides direct funding to local communities that no, that didn't have the funding for vegetation management.
Excellent. Good to know. Thanks very much. Okay, council reports.
And, and thanks. Appreciate the report. And I know mutual aid is really key because you're right. If we get hit, um, mutual aid is going to be the key to it. And we're fortunate because being in Marin, we can get resources from the north, the south or the east. So we're somewhat well positioned. Yeah. And I'm glad everybody's safe. That, I think that's one of the key things also. Thank you. Uh, so with that, my council report to 1218, which was last year, which is really bizarre. Um, attended age friendly Corredera meeting, 113, January 13, I count, uh, attended Marin County Transit meeting. Two things there, the bus stop at, um, Meadows Street and Tamil Pies is going to be redone. Um, there's a whole schedule. Yeah, there's about a million two in those projects throughout the county. And the other thing is I, I got bumped up. So now I'm second vice president on Marin Transit. Um, 11 or 115 attended age friendly Corredera, uh, 117, there was an, uh, Marin wildfire prevention walk around, which Adam attended and also Jim did. That was on the Tiburon side. There was quite a few people from Corredera there because of Ring Mountain, the effect it has on the other side. So that project's being done in conjunction with Southern Marin Fire, Marin County Parks and MWPA. So again, they're removing a lot of vegetation and a lot of, lot of, um, trees in that area. Again, they're not clear cutting environmentally safe. And then his last thing is, um, the intergenerational center at hot committee. I won't give days, but I think the last two weeks we've been meeting regularly and we actually met today also. Hopefully within the next week, two weeks, I'll be optimistic. We'll hear some progress on that. And Pat's been attending those also as well as Adams. Thanks.
Thanks for reporting for me, Fred. Okay, Eli.
All right. January 10th, uh, was at the opening of the Pedaluma North Smart Train, uh, station, which was awesome. Huge turnout. Very exciting, uh, to see that, uh, that network continue to get built out. Uh, January 14th attended the swearing in of our new supervisor, Brian Colbert. Also, January 14th had a central marine sanitation agency meeting, nothing major to report. Uh, January 15th, I met with, uh, Julie Kritzberger, the director of our chamber of commerce, as I believe, um, we all may have just to kind of talk about strategic planning for the future. I think more, more public conversations to be had there. Uh, and then just wanted to say that, uh, on the 20th, which was yesterday, I attended the Martin Luther King Junior Day celebration in Marin City, and it was fantastic. So I'd say anyone who hasn't had a, an opportunity to, uh, go to that event before, highly recommend next year. It was a, really just a, a beautiful gathering and that is all.
Jim?
Okay. On January 13th, uh, I watched or observed the BPAC, uh, committee meeting, uh, among public comments. People, uh, were concerned about the, uh, throttle controlled e-bikes and the fact that kids can seriously hurt themselves on it. There's also a question of, uh, repairing the tainter steps, which is sort of from Chapman up to the next street. Okay. Uh, the town's starting to work on an ADA self-assessment, so you should sign up for the, uh, poll on that. And, uh, we're working on, uh, the north, south, uh, Greenway, uh, grant proposal. And that'll take about 18 months. If, if the grant comes through, it'll be an 18 month study. And then Corredera, Madura Gardens and Corredera is about to be, uh, uh, get its streets reworked where I know they're currently working on the sewers and so on. Uh, once that's done, they're going to go to work, to work on, uh, uh, states, uh, safe streets, uh, or complete streets. And so that'll be most, the rest of the spring and probably most of the summer. Uh, on the 16th, I went to Marin wildfire for my first meeting. Couple of things that they stressed, uh, about the fires down south and, uh, Ruben, correct me if I get anything wrong, but one, that the wildfires are really not a surprise. Basically you can look where there were fires in the past and bet that you'll have a fire there in the future. Uh, and let me mention, 1899, there is the Corredera Mill Valley Larchburg wildfire. 1923, there was a Nevada's San Geronimo Valley fire. 1929, there was a Mill Valley fire. Uh, and then in the last 30 years, there's been a couple of fires up in San Geronimo Valley and up north there. So we, we live in fire country. Uh, the other thing is, uh, home hardening works. You know, if you look at the grate around, uh, uh, the vents around your house, make certain that it's fairly narrow, uh, width. It's what? Uh, 1/8 inch or less? Okay. Also, when the new fire, uh, code comes out from Sacramento, we should not be surprised if we're being asked to implement, uh, zone zero policy, which means basically around everybody's house, clear away the brush. And then the last thing that, uh, Chief Brown, uh, mentioned was when you're evacuating and you're in your car, don't abandon your car. Cause one, when you're running around with all those embers, you're liable to, uh, get your hair or eyebrows scorched, but also everybody behind you is stopped. And so just stay in your car as you're coming down the hill. And if you don't think your car can make it down the hill, and I'm thinking of Christmas tree hill in particular, use the pathways initially, but leave your car in your garage or parking space. So anyway, that's. Oh, and on the 17th, I got to wander around Tiburon.
Um, I had a pretty light couple of weeks. So the only thing I have to report is meeting with Julie Kritzberger on Tuesday, the 13th to talk about our ways forward.
Okay. And, um, thank you all for reminding me what I was doing because I was coming up blank. Um, the IGC subcommittee meetings have been great. I think we are making progress there. I too have met with Julie. Um, tomorrow is the beautification committee meeting where they're trying to find new leadership. Julie really needs to, um, focus on the chamber and, uh, the beautification committee is, is really needing new volunteers. So if you guys know of anybody who's kind of chomping at the bit to get involved, uh, let them know that tomorrow is an important meeting that would be great for them to attend. I did hear from Mary Sackett, who's now the president of the board of supervisors. They are reviewing a new countywide e-bike ordinance and would really are hoping that we will weigh in. And I also heard from, whoops, also heard from, uh, Dennis Redoni regarding the, um, immigration situation in Marin. And he says that Marin has been preparing for the next administration by holding know your rights events throughout Marin. They've printed over 10,000 red cards for residents for easy reference should they get approached by an ICE agent. Uh, the formal resolution was approved last week at the board of supervisors. And he's really hoping that those of us who interact with the, uh, immigrant community will let them know that there, there is assistance for them at the county level. And the only thing I want to add to the fire is one of the things I heard down in LA is that people with swimming pools, they have these new pumps that basically spray the water out of your pool and onto your house as a preventative thing. So there are new technologies that some of us might be able to use one day. Um, and I think that is it for my report, which means that we now move on to the draft agenda for upcoming meetings. Did you?
I do this. I forgot. One, community meeting tomorrow night on the new, uh, proposed, um, housing development at 240 Tamil Vista Boulevard. So anybody interested in that project should, uh, can come here or it's also hybrid.
That was a good meeting today, I think, to hear from them. So good job setting that up. Okay. Anything else from anybody on the, um, question of the agenda for next, uh, meeting? Is there any concerns or questions regarding that?
So have we decided that we're going to look at the question of, uh, changing the minutes at the strategic meeting or we, should that be agendized?
What do you think, Adam? Can we cover that? Oh, he wasn't paying attention. You two are going to have to separate you. Gosh, I'm so offended. You weren't hanging on my every word.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Would you like us to repeat the question?
Yes. So my question was, will we be, uh, looking at, uh, changing the meaning, the meeting minutes as we take them at the strategic um, meeting? Or are we going to just agendize that somewhere?
Yeah, I, I think we can, we should discuss it as perhaps at the work plan. And say whether or not we want to move forward then and get some consensus around that.
Okay. Very good. Anything else? Then we are at eight 35 adjourned.